Okay, good evening. It is Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Happy New Year. This is the time and place, six thirty for the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. I call this meeting to order. Mrs. Martin, may please have a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Director Williams, apologies.
This stands for the pledge in the moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the five million citizens of America and to the great love which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. At the moment of silence.
Great, thank you. Now I'll take a roll call, please.
Pryser.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Fowler.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Wow.
Murray.
Present.
Fine.
Present.
England.
Present.
Nom.
Present.
All members present.
Great, thank you. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Everyone's had an opportunity to review it prior to this evening's meeting. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Director Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Director England, second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. I will move to presentations. I will state at the outset that the high school students of the month for January are Island Zemba and Tyler Shunk. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs. And the middle school student for the month for January is Levi Bucks. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club. And Levi will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Understand that our student board representative is not available this evening, so we'll move straight to our presentation by the district auditors. Dr. Messinger, if you want to introduce. All right.
Forgot how to use the microphone, sorry. Um, yes, we have Jeff with us from Barbicane Thornton, our auditors to present. He is here on Zoom. Hi.
Hi. Good evening. Um, so I am delighted to be here tonight, virtually, thankfully because of the rain, to present the results of our audit of the Northern Lebanon School District for the year into June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah, you can go to the next slide, that's fine. So this is our first year working as your independent auditor, so we've enjoyed getting to know your district and getting to know your team and then see how they operate. I'm pleased to let you know right off the bat that we are anticipating issuing an unmodified, also known as a clean audit opinion, on the financial statements. Additionally, we will be issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on compliance with the major federal programs. If you don't mind going back one slide, which is the, the, for you, it's the ESSER program as well as the special education cluster. Now, that additional compliance audit opinion is an opinion that we are, your district is compelled to have a federal single audit, which is an audit of major federal programs, because you expend more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in a given year. Each individual program that exceeds seven hundred fifty thousand dollars has to be audited at least every third year. And additionally, because the ESSER funding is considered higher risk, it is generally subject to audit. It pretty much unless, unless in, say, two thousand and twenty-five, you have tail ESSER funding, which is minimal. Otherwise, it's generally susceptible each year to federal audit. So that involves looking at transactions within those programs as well as looking at compliance with other requirements that the federal government asks us to look at. They put out a, it's about a two thousand page book covering the majority of the major federal programs each year. So we look at what they ask us to look at, and I'm pleased to say we're issuing an unmodified or clean audit opinion. Additionally, if we identify material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls, whether they are internal controls over financial reporting or internal controls over compliance, we're required to report them to you and out to the public. I'm pleased to let you know that we did not identify any, and so we do not have any in our report. We want to flip now to the next page. I can give you sort of a high level view of the audit results for the year. So anybody who has looked at the financial statements in prior year may recall that there are two sets of financial statements. The first is your entity-wide, which is your full accrual basis. This looks at the government, similar to how a business would look at itself with all of your assets, including your, your buildings, your equipment, reflected, and on the liability side, all of your debt listed as a long-term liability. This basis is a little different from the basis on which you prepare your annual budget. So we'll look at that second, but first, at the, at the entity-wide level, I want to highlight that at the end of the year, you had total assets and deferred outflows of resources of about a hundred and seven million compared to liabilities of about a hundred and forty-five million, leaving you with a net position of about negative thirty-nine million. Now, that net position includes a substantial proportionate share of the Peasars' net pension liability. Your district, like all Pennsylvania's school districts, are required to participate in Peasars. And as part of governmental accounting standards, you're required to reflect your proportionate share of the current shortfall in Peasars. Now, your proportionate share was about forty-nine million. And I should highlight that that is not forty-nine million dollars that your district needs to go and pay out. It is the recognition that through the things that Peasars has been doing in recent years of increasing rates, changing eligibility and changing membership rules, the shortfall is going to be funded over time through those increased rates and those changes. And we have seen the proportionate share or the drop somewhat in recent years. The, the other thing to highlight is, of course, the state does provide a fifty percent subsidy on payments to Peasars, which is not allowed for kind of silly technical reasons to be offset against the liability. So even if you were to say, this is liability that through future payments we are paying, the state actually covers half of it. On the revenue and expense side, you'll see that revenues were about forty-six million in the governmental, forty-seven million total. That business-type activities column, I should note, is your food service fund against expenses of about fifty-three point nine million, showing an overall change in, in net position of about six point five million. And again, I do want to highlight, this is a different basis from your budgetary basis, and it is highly influenced by things like the changes in the net pension and net, net other post-employment benefit liability. And so for that reason, I figured it would make sense next, on the next slide, to kind of look at your budget versus actual, to get an understanding for where you anticipated you would be and where you ended up. And you had anticipated in your general fund to have revenues of about forty-five point one million and expenditures and other financing uses of about forty-five point nine, which included a budgetary reserve of two hundred thousand. And you anticipated an overall decrease in fund balance of about seven hundred eighty thousand. Overall expenditures, you'll see we're, we're right in line with budget. You were about two hundred eighty thousand dollars under budget. On the revenue side, you'll see you were about one point one million dollars over your budget, and that's pretty consistent with what we've seen statewide. There were two key factors that we saw districts perform, outperform their budgets last year. One was investment and interest rates grew significantly. So whereas districts had historically had near zero investment returns, because districts are categorically restricted in what they can invest in, this year, even the safe, stable investments that districts are able to participate in saw investment returns. And so we saw some increase there that was unanticipated. The other is that the state was very late in finalizing its budget allocations to school districts, and therefore they told all school districts to assume level funding for the year. And when they were able to provide a little more funding than what is anticipated initially, that was a unbudgeted one-time amount that the district was able to see. You know, in theory, it's anticipated that that should not happen again. We have a very divided Senate currently in Pennsylvania, so, so what this year's going to look like remains to be seen. But I would say that if you're looking at this, wondering if this means we can ratchet up our revenue budget, I wouldn't take that message away, because there were very much some specific one-time things that, that led to these results. One other thing I did want to highlight this year, which is on my final slide before I open it up to questions, is that there was a new accounting standard that was required to be implemented this year by the district, which was Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Ninety-Six, just on subscription-based information technology arrangements. Last year, the district was required to start reflecting long-term leases as an asset and a liability at the entity-wide level based on the idea that they had this intangible right to use a physical asset for a period greater than a year. The Government Accounting Standards Board then took that concept and applied it to subscription IT arrangements and said, well, you have this software as a service, or you, you're using an external platform for a period greater than a year. That, in our mind, in their mind, is very similar to a lease, and therefore we think it should be treated similarly. So now you're required to reflect subscription assets and subscription liabilities for subscriptions that are more than a year in length. It's a lot smaller than the leases, and in fact, the opening adjustment to your net position was seven dollars as a result of implementation. But I did want to highlight it because it is two new lines on the financial statements, and there's a new disclosure about it. So I did want to make you aware of that. I also wanted to make you aware that we did make an adjustment to opening a net position on the entity-wide basis this year. Yeah, I don't have a slide for that, sorry. The district did a reevaluation as part of our coming in on the transportation contract. It had previously been accounted for as a lease and reflected as a lease asset and liability. If we, we, based on the assessment, we went back and forth, and the final determination was that it didn't fully meet the definition, and so therefore it has been removed as a lease asset and a liability. So you'll see there was an adjustment to opening that position to, to make that change. So at this point, I've probably talked long enough, and I'd love to open it up to any questions that anybody may have about the audit, the financial statements, or about anything else that I might be able to touch on.
Any questions? And we'll have a hard copy report, Jeff?
Uh, yes, we will be finalizing and issuing short after this meeting.
Great.
Okay, well, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the report. And, and for you Zooming in tonight, just thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me. I'm, I'm hopeful my schedule will work out that I can be in person next time, because I'd love to actually meet all of you. So, but thank you so much, and thank you for putting your trust in our organization. We appreciate it. If we can ever be of any further service, please do not hesitate to reach out.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, I did want to, before I move on to the superintendent's report, I just did want to note that publicly that the board met an executive session last Tuesday for a board workshop. So I should have said that at the outset, but I wanted to make sure that that was stated very clearly. Dr. Messinger, your report, please.
Yeah, I want to, I want to just start out by, again, saying thank you to Leanne and her crew for a job well done. I actually think the, the expenditures, the revenue is one thing. You can't always predict interest rates, and it's great that we're, we're getting some interest income and, you know, and, and certainly state funding. You've always taken the approach of level funding, because you just, we, we pass a budget prior to the state deciding, and I think that's smart. So revenue, you, you hope that you're above, you know, we, we try to budget conservatively, but the expenses within that amount shows that we've done a lot of good work preparing those budgets and being accurate with things. And a forty-six million, forty-five million dollar budget to be off two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is, is pretty good. So thank you to you and your team and the findings again, and I just appreciate the hard work that you guys do. And you have some report for tonight yet. Start with you.
Thank you, Gary. I just wanted to bring to your attention again, like they had just said, we are doing interest earnings again this year. We are looking, the market's favorable for us. So so far this year, we've brought in two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, just in interest earnings to the district. We budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we have already exceeded that at this point in the year, which is great news. One other thing I'd like to highlight is that when we started doing the high school renovation project, one of the ways we said we were, the way we said we were going to finance that was a series of three bonds, one each year, remaining below the fifteen million dollars for each calendar year, so that we can earn interest on it and retain that money for the district. So I know we just did one in two thousand and twenty-three, so we are also, because the market right now, Brad Remig has contacted me as favorable, we're going to need to start paying out the money in higher levels this spring, summer, when construction goes underway. We are looking to do our next bond in February. So at the first meeting in February, Brad Remig will be coming again to talk to everyone and explain the bond process. And then we will be putting on the agenda the parameters resolution, just like we did before, for approval at the committee, so that they can go ahead and do this. And one other thing I'm not sure, I believe this happened after the meeting in December, so I don't think Gary mentioned it, that we did get back the signed, I know Lick, Del, and East Hanover are still hanging out there, the buildings, we do own those still. We did get back the signed agreements from the Department of Military Veterans Affairs in December, and they are doing their due diligence and hoping to have that settlement and have them take ownership of that sooner rather than later, hopefully in the next couple of months. So that's all for me. Thank you.
I did know that we had the audit report tonight, never quite sure how long that's going to go, especially with the new auditor. I have some other presentations. I just want to announce publicly and, and just let the board know. Over the next two months, at both committee meeting and at the regular meeting, we will be having several different presentations. I have some data from student surveys that we've done to discuss mental health. I'd like to share some of those more specific numbers with the board and publicly, as a matter of fact. We have some climate committee updates that I think are important to hear from, and I'm going to invite some of the, the folks that run the subcommittees to talk. We have some instructional goals and ideas that we want to talk a little bit about. And then overall, kind of just revisiting our long-term plan and getting some specifics in terms of the next couple of years in terms of, and I've talked about culture and want to address some of the specifics that we've been brainstorming. So we'll, we will have a presentation pretty much each, each of those evenings, and we'll try to keep them, you know, ten, fifteen minutes at a time, because I know we have a lot of other stuff. But I think it's important to start talking about some of those, those issues in more detail, getting feedback, inviting the public and the board and our staff to, to participate in some focus groups that I'd like to put together as well. So that's our plan. One other presentation, though, tonight that you may or may not know, but it is School Board Appreciation Month, January. And we, our students and, and staff are hard at work to make each of you a license plate, and so we have a, that, that gift and a thank you to each of you. I know it is a, a job that doesn't pay well, but it is a job that is much appreciated by the community members and the kids of the district, and I appreciate the hard work that the school board puts in, and just a little something in return for that. I don't know if it's quite worth the number of hours that you guys put in, but just to say thank you for, for everything you, you do. That's the end of my report for tonight.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. And please extend our appreciation to the, to the kids that made those as well. That's really nice. Okay, is there any old business for this evening? Okay, hearing none.
Let me, I, I, kind of old business. In front of you, Leanne had been asked about an update. Just a, it's a talking points card for you to have. Sometimes it's helpful in a conversation when something comes up. You have it here, then if you need some quick information sometimes, and, you know, you're approached by someone out in public or whatever. It's something we've done in the past, but this is updated. So we talked about that at a prior board meeting, and I just wanted to get that to you.
Great, thank you. Okay, no further old business, then. The next item is public comment. We do not have any public comment for this evening, so we'll just move straight into the items for board action. This is a voting meeting, is a regular meeting. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act Eighty-four of nineteen eighty-six. By notice of the President, the following actions require a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an aye or a yes. All votes opposed shall be stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state, I abstain when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote, unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the President may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. We'll move to item eight, and I think, Dr. Messinger, we can just go through all of the, all of the sub-items in each of them.
Uh, yeah, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three are minutes from last month, our student activity counts and our cash disbursements. Those are the three that are on every single agenda.
Any questions for Dr. Messinger on these items? Okay, is there a motion to adopt items eight point one through eight point three?
Motion to, oh, go ahead.
Motion to adopt eight point one through eight point three.
Thank you, Director Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Murray. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving items eight point one through eight point three, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, this motion carries unanimously. Item nine, budget and finance.
Uh, yes, nine point one is our employee healthcare cooperative. I'm actually going to let Leanne talk, say a few words about that.
So this is an agreement for our EHCC, and the reason we are having this presented to you tonight for a change was that it's changed. So the EHCC is all the Lancaster, Lebanon school districts. We are self-funded for healthcare, and after a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per claimant, we go with the IU group of school districts to start helping us cover those funds. And the IU has decided to leave the EHCC, and prior to this, they used to manage it for us, so now we have a third party doing it. It's pretty much the same cost as there was some cost with the IU doing that, but the document is just changed to remove all the IU thirteen references and the fact that they were administering the plan for us.
Okay, nine point two is our agreement with Chester County Intermediate Unit. I had a great question about that. And when we have, we do have a residential placement that we have a student located in a placement that's in Chester County. And when that happens, Chester County provides services through their intermediate unit. It, it is all dependent upon whether or not we have a student there or not. It's, it's à la carte, for lack of a better word. We pay for what we use. If we're not using it, then we don't pay anything. But it's, it's the agreement with them. Nine point three, nine point three is actually, we use PSBA for quite a few different things. One of the, one of the things that they have available are template, just as they have template board policies, they also have template administrative procedures. If you've ever read through board policies, a lot of times it says that the superintendent and our designee will put, to make a procedure. Unfortunately, over time, a lot of those procedures either needed updated, needed, needed to be redone due to legal things, or frankly, aren't able to be found. And I believe, although we've done, I'm going to say roughly twenty or so, as we, as we continually work through them, there's another about sixty to seventy references of procedures. And, and some of those cases are, they're complicated. There's legal things that you need to consider. PSBA has templates available. I've heard from other superintendents that it's a really good service, and it gives you the ability to work through them a, a little more easily than starting from scratch on every single one. So the quote was there for you. It's spread out over two years, and it's just part of, it's part of what they do. It's something we've not purchased. It would be a one-time purchase, and then we go from there. Number nine point four is our list of district depositories. And number nine point five is our Heartland Agreement. I, I think I referenced that in my summary in an email. It allows us to do some online credit card sales with, in a, in a way that doesn't lead to liability for the district. Anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, this is something that will be very exciting for the school district, because we have had teachers and for instance, when we sell musical tickets, been looking for something like this that they can utilize. So this was a deed that we had, and we went out and found them, and it's also a third party that will take the liability of credit card information, like Gary said.
I mean, even to the point of being, you know, being able to use your phone and scan a QR code and, and, and being able to pay that way. But without the light, without the, there are concerns for school districts about using card readers, and so this is a safer way for us to do that.
Okay, any questions regarding items nine point one through nine point five? Okay, motion to adopt nine point one through nine point five, please.
Motion to approve nine point one through nine point five.
Thank you, Director Murray. Or, yes, Director Murray, is there a second, please? Thank you. Is there any discussion? I would just like to note regarding the rules and regulations, this is something that even in the course of developing policy, that we find out that a lot of these policies and rules and regulations, and I'm, I'm recalling the, the grounds thing that we had last fall where we, we approved the, the field paint thing, because it, it, it took time for our grounds crew to do that. I think these administrative regulations take so much time from our administration that they should be using in other places. So I just, I just want to say, I, I think this is an excellent thing for us to be doing, to have that resource to contract for and be able to do those regulations. So I just wanted to say that. Okay, all those in favor of adopting nine point one through nine point five, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
"Aye."
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We will move to item 10, this is buildings and grounds.
So 10.1 is broken up into A and B. It's about the summer work crew program. We've done this in the past for custodial services to help us with cleaning over the summer. And we've also done some technology. The only thing that I wanted to bring up in terms of feedback, we did, believe it or not, if you look at those rates, we did actually from last year to, last year, last summer, we raised those rates. I think we were at like 7, 725. You know, we don't get a ton of students from an hourly rate standpoint. I guess my question to the board is, what do you think about those rates? Are they too low or, you know? We certainly, if we get some students, it's certainly helpful to us. It's probably not the end of the world if we don't get any. I can tell you that I don't think we've had eight in a long, long time. No. I think you have a family member that's done it though from time to time. We get a couple. I don't know that 10 is competitive for a summer, you know, a summer job. So wanted to throw that out there for feedback.
Did you do both of them? So that covers both summer work. Yeah. Okay, any questions regarding that? And then we'll take a motion and then we'll have discussion. We can provide some feedback based on that. No questions, or a motion to, oh, sorry.
Is the, are we doing the, are we doing both A and B at the same time?
Yes. Unless we need to separate them, we certainly can.
I was just asking, I just wanted a clarification.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt item 10.1? Okay, thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Director Klein, thank you very much. Okay, any discussion? I think, yeah, I think you're right. I think it's probably not competitive. I think we won't know until we don't have anyone sign up, in which case it'll be too late to increase the rate. But I think most, most students are getting paid on the order of $15 an hour for just even fast food work at this point. Any other discussion?
I mean, I agree. Is there, I mean, is there a way we can raise it or is that?
Yeah, we would just have to modify it and then make a motion to adopt the revised amounts, yeah.
Yeah, so we could table the motion and we can, we can have discussion on revising it and take a new motion.
Okay.
Is there a need to have eight students or is that, like, could you offer less students for that money?
I don't know that the eight is necessarily a magic number. And I, and I will also say that I think it's hard for us to predict this year because of, the construction's going to create a lot of different challenges over the summer over that building. However, we only have two buildings instead of the four elementaries, although this one's obviously way bigger than, you know, than what we're used to in terms of the size of one of them. I don't know that a, yes, we could do up to six students and change it to $14. You know, and work on it that way. Unless, unless you know of a reason, Dr. Reese, about eight being a magic number of any, okay. So yeah, we could, we could try that. We could do up to six and maybe we could do 14 and 16 for the supervisor. Just throwing numbers out there. Would you guys be comfortable with those numbers?
Yeah.
I would be. I mean, I just think $10 is really low, you know, and for a student looking for a summer job, $10 an hour really isn't going to cut it. And so I guess it depends on how badly does the school district need these student workers. And if you feel like it's a great asset to the school over the summer to have these students, then I think you ought to, we ought to invest a little bit more and offer them a little bit more money.
Just, just to offer some perspective, we say students, although there's no provision that it has to be students. This is really just part-time summer work.
Right.
So it could be adults, does not have to be students. The other number that I think would be helpful to understand is that our starting aid rate is 1322 an hour. So I don't think we would, we would want to exceed that certainly. But if you get closer to that number, that would be a fair comparison perhaps.
That's a good point.
Well, I think all the more reason to have a higher wage if it's not just limited to students. If you're saying that it's available for adults as well, then, you know, I think, I think increasing the wage might make it more enticing.
It is, although I have to confess in my recollection, I don't remember, traditionally, the adults fill the supervisor role. I don't remember them just being the general employee, but as I thought about it, there's really no provision that would prevent somebody from, an adult from having a summer work job with us.
Typically a classified person who wants to continue to work over the summer. Well, I would then propose, based on, that's a great point about the starting salary. I don't think we should obviously go over that. You know, and that's a whole nother discussion that we'll have in the next couple of months. But maybe propose six students or six positions at $13 an hour, one supervisor at $15 an hour, and also change the technology to the $13 an hour as well. Gives us a start, and then we can see what we get, and we can talk further from there.
Okay, so we are saying, so the potential revision is the supervisor at 15, the eight students at what, or six students? Are we modifying that?
13, and a supervisor at 15.
And how many students are we suggesting?
Up to six.
Okay. Okay, so actually, I think the cleanest way to do this is actually to, yeah, we've got two choices. We can vote on the motion that's been presented, or we can have a motion to amend the present motion. So Director England, you presented the motion, so I'll defer to you if you would like to make a motion to amend.
Sure, I would move to amend the motion to change it to six positions at $13 an hour, supervisor at $15 an hour, and then B, two students at $13 an hour for check.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there a second to this amended motion, motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, hearing none, then this vote is just to amend the motion. So all in favor of amending the motion, please indicate with an "I" or "yes."
"Aye."
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes. That motion carries unanimously. So now we will vote on the motion itself. So all in favor of voting on the motion as amended, please indicate with an "I" or "yes."
"Aye."
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you. Okay, extracurricular.
Okay, we have a request, a trip request for the Math Honor Society members for New York City, April 12, 2024. Only cost there would be to get some substitute teachers. And then also, we have two volunteer coaches, including a Mrs. Bressler, who has some background with wrestling and her family and to help with girl staff, the girl staff. And the girls have been doing very well, by the way.
Great. Okay, any questions? Are the girls still undefeated?
Yes.
They are? Yeah, great. Okay, fantastic. Okay, is there a motion to adopt item 11.1 and 11.2?
Motion to approve 11.1 and 11.2.
Great, thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving items 11.1 and 11.2, please indicate with an "I" or "yes."
Yes.
"Aye."
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously, curriculum.
Yes, this is the, this is the policy that was listed in a December meeting under informational that Dr. Bastak Jones talked about, about the screening and evaluation of students with disabilities and suggested changes from stock or later.
Okay, any questions? Okay, is there a motion to adopt item 12.1?
Motion to adopt 12.1.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please indicate with an "I" or "yes."
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to item 13, human relations.
Yeah, Dr. Reese is going to take this one.
Great.
13.1 is employment for Giulio Toro, which is actually a change in placement to a long-term substitute professional English language arts. Savannah Golly as a secondary English language arts teacher, and Rachel England as a short-term professional substitute in the high school English teacher position. Item 13.2 is the standard substitute list with the January updates that is attached. Item 13.3 is resignations. If you flip the page, they're listed at the top there, Kira Perkins and Rhonda Sowers for the purposes of retirement. 13.4 is our traditional or standard column movement in the professional contract that's offered periodically through the year. And you can see those names listed. 13.5 is for mentors, Jennifer Hornberger mentoring new teacher, and Harley Hoffman mentoring new teacher. 13.6 is an agreement with LVC so that we can receive interns in the more operational side of the district, including the business office and technology office. This is in an effort to try to continue to upstaff or prepare for staffing positions. We've been hearing stories throughout the IU about districts that can't staff their business offices because the employee, the employment opportunities are dry there. At least people aren't coming out that are qualified or willing to do, do it for the salary or whatever reason. So as a district, we're trying to take proactive steps that we can also be prepared to fill any holes that may be created in those positions as well. 13.7 is a job description for a needed position. This is related to our virtual academy, the V3 Academy, and it's specific to a teacher that's going to focus on the special ed components of the students that are involved in the program. It's something that we've been probably struggling with over the years in the V3 Academy and the way we've approached supporting students. And with a fresh look at it, this is an area where we think we do need to support our students. I don't know, Dr. Messinger, do you have that number of V3 students that have IEPs?
Yeah, it was a high of 20, right? It's currently 16 special education students, which, you know, in a program of 40 essentially full-time V3 students, you're a little less than half, our special education.
And then the final item under number 13 is a correction in the way that some items were handled during the reorganization meeting. The appointment, or the appointments of these positions needed to be voted on, not just appointed by the president. So this action is in effect to correct that and make it official.
Thank you, Dr. Reese.
You're welcome. I tried to say that as politely as I could.
I appreciate the chastity. Okay, any questions? We do have a number of items here, and I do understand that we do have a couple of abstentions on at least two of the items. And I'll explain the process there. But items 13.1 through 13.8, we are going to vote on all of them collectively. But are there any questions regarding any of those individual items?
I just have one question regarding the interns, just out of curiosity. Are they, is it a paid internship or is it, do we pay them or is it just part of their schooling?
They are paid, paid intern positions. And that's already included in our budget?
Based, I just, based on where our salaries are currently, we believe we have the room for that. They're not working. How many days are they working?
This, I believe, two days is what.
We're looking at anywhere from 12 to 18 hours a week.
Yeah, because of the lack of, you hate it because it's of this reason, but because of the lack of substitutes, because of the timeframe that sometimes it takes when a teacher retires or moves on or whatever, it winds, we wind up with some cushioning in the salaries. You know, you would hope you could stay fully staffed for an entire year and you have every sub that you always need. But, and that's what we budget for, but in reality, that doesn't happen. And therefore, it does give us opportunities to supplement with some of these other folks. And this is a relatively minor expense in terms of that. There's no Peasers involved.
Right.
There's no benefits involved. It's just that hour.
No, I think it's, I think it's great. I just, just wanted a clarification.
Well, I know that, you know, Dr. Reese referenced it. Like, we have school districts that we're aware of that are sharing business managers at this point because, you know, smaller ones, but they can't find people. I know that Elko right now has someone who's retired because they can't find someone. We have to, you know, not just with our teachers, but in other aspects, you know, it's to try to build some of these relationships. And LVC has been good to us in a lot of ways too. So I don't know, we'll give it a shot, see.
One other worthwhile mention is, you can recall, the assistant business manager position. We weren't able to fill that with a college graduate, and we ended up getting extremely fortunate with the two individuals we have. But we did move things around the business office because of that shortage and kind of made our, worked with what we had in two talented individuals here. So we were fortunate for that, but this, you know, hopefully could avoid something like that in the future.
Well, and I'll say HR is another area because H, not that I want to lose my, don't listen to this. HR people in the private sector are making a lot more money.
No, they're not.
Which we discovered when we were advertising that. Got a couple people called me and asked me what the salary range was and said, then, no, thank you.
And so these two interns would also not come from the Education Department of LVC. They'd come from IT or business majors. That's, I think that's great. That's really good. Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion? Okay, so here's, here's what we'll do. I'll take a motion to adopt items 13.1 through 13.8, and we'll take a second. And then when you vote, if you have to abstain, just say "I," except for abstention on item 13 point whichever, if that's clear, okay? So is there a motion to adopt items 13.1 through 13.8?
Motion to approve 13.1 through 13.8.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, you know what, here's what we'll do. We'll do this as a roll call to give folks an opportunity to voice abstentions. Sorry. Thank you for being ready.
Moyer?
Yes.
Blauer?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Blau? Yes, I abstained from 13.2. Murray? Yes. Klein?
Yes.
England?
Yes, but I abstained from 13.1.
Nom?
Yes.
And Kreiser?
Yes.
All in favor, except for two extensions.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Martin. Sorry to surprise you with that. Okay, item 14 is information items?
Yeah, just, we have a language arts teacher providing homebound instruction for a 12th grade student. Just a real quick, I just want to throw this out there, make sure we all understood where we were. We obviously have the change order committee. The amounts that we currently have were $20,000. Anything under that is coming to me, and then the change order committee from $20,000 up to $100,000, then over $100,000 goes to the board. I just want to make sure we're comfortable with those numbers. At one point in time, we were, we were less than that, and then we increased it just to keep things moving. And the other thing that sometimes we encounter is a credit. We're, we had the caveat that all credits can be approved by me because we're getting money. So even if it's over $20,000, as long as it's a credit, I'm assuming there's no issue with that. We don't, we don't have many of those, don't get too excited. And occasionally, we also have, just as a heads up, we have no value credit or change orders. We have two options for also publicizing those, and if you have a preference, let me know. We've put them on the, on the board agenda, actually under informational items, if it wasn't approved by the change order committee. And the ones that are approved by the change order committee, we've typically listed. Until we got to the summer when we didn't have a board meeting in July, and then we put everything on the website under the change order committee. under the change order committee. I think, I don't think I said website, but on the website. We'll continue with those practices as long as everybody is okay with that. If there's not, we can make it, I, I can put on the next agenda something to change it. You don't have to give me feedback tonight. If you wanna give me feedback later, that's fine. If you have any feedback tonight, certainly be glad to listen to that.
Can you just give those ranges again for everybody?
Uh, up to twenty thousand dollars has been superintendent. Twenty thousand to a hundred thousand has been the change order committee, and then over a hundred thousand, it comes to the entire board.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I, I think we had a couple for the board here. We had that soil remediation.
Yeah.
And we had one that we debated, the overlook for the gym that we decided not to do. There weren't many, two, two maybe, three?
Okay, any discussion or questions for Dr. Messinger? Okay, just give that some thought over the course of the next couple of weeks until the committee meeting. If you have any suggestions or questions or ideas to change that, just let Dr. Messinger know before that. Okay, we'll move to item fifteen. This is our reports. CTC, Director Klein?
I may have mentioned to some of you before, but the Career and Technology Center is going to conduct a feasibility study in the near future to take a look at the possible expansion of facilities. So more info to come on that in the future.
Great, thank you. Good report, appreciate it. IU thirteen, Director Murray?
Yeah, so the December meeting gave me the oppor- opportunity to tour the old Jonestown Elementary School, which is currently known as the Northern Education Center by the IU. So they gave us some facts and figures. We got to tour the building. I will tell you that Mr. Lindberg's art is still alive and well in that building, which was nice for me to see. The other thing that I just, maybe many of you know about this, but the they're going to have a community clothing bank that's run by the Northern Lebanon Ministerium, and the IU is partnering with the ministerium to have that clothing bank run in what used to be, I believe, Mrs. Kleese's old room in Jonestown, so, and they're expanding that. So there's also some BYBA basketball still going on, so even though it's owned by the IU, they are really allowing the community to utilize that building, which did my heart good. I got a little teary-eyed about it actually at the meeting, and so fellow IU board members appreciated the building and said, the IU said it's actually the, the most up-to-date and the, the best building they've actually ever received. So purchased from any school district, it was in the best shape. They really don't feel like there's much they have to do to it, so they were very pleased with the purchase and, and this kinda made me feel mutual about that. It was a, it was a, a great meeting and I'm excited to see what they're going to do with that Northern, or Northern Education Center.
Great, thank you. Good report, appreciate it. Legislative liaison, Director Kreiser, anything to report?
Uh, yeah, two items. The first one is that a, right before Christmas, there was a bill that was sent to the governor's desk that would require students to complete a financial literacy course before graduation. So that was proposed by Lebanon County's Senator Gephardt.
Great.
And probably the most important one was the change in the state's requirement on school attendance hours. It was a hundred and eighty days, or I believe it was nine hundred and ninety hours that was required to be completed. Both requirements had to be met. Now it's an either or situation.
Great.
So that all offers more flexibility to districts.
Great, good report, thank you. And then for PSBA, Director Blau has indicated that she's willing to take on that responsibility, so I will appoint you. Thank you for doing that. I don't expect you to have a report, but if you do.
I, I've been reading the one emails, the one thing that I thought was interesting, they overlap with legislation a lot. I think this was already voted on. They're going to give or teachers, when they get their certificate, I think for student teaching actually was what it is. Like a ten thousand stipend to help pay for their college, and then if it's a school district where there's a high turnover rate, they're gonna give them extra five thousand dollars if they stay there for three years. That was incentive to get more schools and, and more teachers in Pennsylvania schools.
Okay, great. Thank you, good report, appreciate it. And thank you for stepping up to, to do that liaison work, really appreciate it. Okay, any new business for the board?
I have one other thing, sorry. Just again, looking for feedback, and for those of you, you know, parents and we've talked a couple of different times. You know that we have the ability to use flexible instructional days for snow days. I mean, that is nice from the standpoint of snow makeup days are difficult, particularly by the time you get to Easter. A lot of times, kids need a break, adults need a break, and no one wants to go longer into the summer either. So that's been a good thing. We can, we have up to five a year. We've been approved again for another three-year cycle. However, there are times where we can get into school, but it's, but the two-hour delay doesn't quite cut it. And, and so, you know, we've talked, Dr. Reese and I have talked a couple different times. Well, it'd be nice to have a three-hour delay, but then you start to wait, that was kinda, we started that conversation maybe even before flexible instructional days. And now I'm kind of torn about it, whether or not it should be a thing or not a thing. It's essentially a half a day. Is it better to be a half a day in, if, you know, if it's icy at nine o'clock and we can't start runs, but by ten thirty it warms up and you can do the, you know, a three hour, is it better to do a half a day in school? Or is it better to stick with the virtual? And I'm just curious as to, you know, any opinions, and, and I didn't give you any time to think about it, so you can think about it. But any opinions you might have as a parent or as a board member that, you know, that's had kids go through would, would be interested in your feedback on that.
I can give you an initial thought, but I might wanna, I might wanna think on it.
Okay, well, let's think.
Before I say something, I regret.
Yeah, yeah.
Would, would that three-hour delay include serving of lunch or not?
Yeah, we'd probably try to do lunch in there. I mean, I, we'd have to work through the logistic. We don't have such a thing right now, so we'd have to work through some of those logistics. We don't, I mean, we don't do lunch though on like the Christmas day or the Easter day because they're gone. I mean, seven thirty to ten thirty is, is a half a day. Yeah, ten forty, ten fifty, yeah, sorry, ten fifty. And so they're home before, before lunch. But that's a factor to think about. And that might be difficult because if we can't safely get the cafeteria staff in to prepare it, then so I can, I can ask around. We'll ask nutrition group what they think about that. Good question.
Are each of the class periods shortened a bit, or how do you split it off?
At, at secondary, it's shortened. At the elementary, it's a little bit easier. You tell them to prioritize reading and math and, you know, try to focus on those types of things. Secondary, and maybe, you know, maybe in reality, it works better for one than the other. Because at the secondary, you do get to a point where the periods are so short that, yeah, yeah.
I don't think anyone else in the county offers a three-hour delay. How would that affect like CTC students?
Well, I, I mean, that depends on what CTC schedule is on. If they, if, if CTC goes to a two-hour delay, for instance, or obviously if they close and it doesn't, they just, they wouldn't go that day. If CTC would be on a two-hour delay, yeah, I mean, their, their timing would be different in that situation. I mean, that happens to us on occasion anyway, for instance, like the last day of school before Christmas or other days where some districts sometimes will take a half a day for an end service or something like that. And then, I mean, there's options there, but we don't. Our district is a little bit different sometimes because along the mountain range, like, we get hit sometimes where the southern side of Lebanon County doesn't have the same type of weather. And, you know, there might even, there are times where we close and other districts are open and CTC runs as well. I mean, that, that's always a consideration though. It's a, you know, it's something that we try to accommodate. Sometimes they'll go on their own. But yeah, that's certainly a factor.
Is it something that other districts are considering? Cause I know we like to try to be consistent with other districts.
Interestingly, the idea was not mine. It came out of discussions in, when I was in Dolphin County, and they were discussing it there. Some districts have done it in Dolphin County. No one in Lebanon County has done it that I'm aware of. Now, I have a meeting on Friday, so I might throw it out there at them. And, and it wouldn't be something I'd probably utilize this year. We'd probably, cause we wanna educate parents and, and that kinda thing. Just trying to think about in terms of instruction, in terms of, in terms of mental health, is it better to get kids in for part of a day than to do, you know, the virtual day? It's just, just seeking feedback on it.
A good snow day was always a good mental health day for me.
And I'll be honest with you, and I, and I talked, I understand that virtual days are probably not the most productive in the world. I will tell you that if you have to come back and do a day at the end of summer or wrap around the next week, also not the most productive day in the world. And I too am kind of with you that there is something to be said about, even if, you know, e- even if you got a little bit of schoolwork to do on the computer, you know, we try to not completely take the snow day environment out of the equation. Yeah, especially, we haven't had really very many in, of late.
Okay, any, any other discussion on that? Okay. Item eighteen, just note the dates to remember. January fifteenth, school is closed for Martin Luther King Junior Day. And then in February, we do have both the committee meeting and the regular meeting. Those are the only two significant dates to remember. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of adjourning this meeting, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right, all right.
See you guys.
Yeah.